Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Good Oil and Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We're also glad to have Julie and Colin here with us. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So today we are thrilled to be back with our second installment of the Brand Partner Pipeline Workshop Series. This is our second week. Last week we gave an overview of the workshop series and we discussed the first phase of your pipeline, which is relationship building. Today, we're going to be focusing on what we like to call the consultative shift. So this is the shift that you take in a friendly conversation where you're moving into assisting with problem solving, or in this case, very specifically, offering to assist with problem solving. And of course, when someone says yes to your offer for assistance, that is the open door for you to be able to then share Young Living. And that is the beginning of your journey as a brand partner with a lead, getting them acquainted with Young Living, and helping them make that right choice for them to pick the products that go into their loyalty order. And of course, get started with some significant lifestyle changes that will change their life, just like all of this changed yours. Head over into the chat and let us know where you're coming in from. Tell us how excited you are about finding new ways to improve the way you grow your Young Living Brand Partner business. We are live here every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time with training that is free for all brand partners and resources for Get Oil and Community members to help you save time and work smarter. If you don't have Get Oil yet, you can get started with us for a dollar for your first month for our most popular plans. We've got incredible world-class support. You reach real humans when you have questions, and you could even get hands-on with us on calls like this one and others. So we pride ourselves on that and being able to be a part of your journey. We believe in what you do because well, this platform was built by and for brand partners. So we're here to help you on your journey because it means a lot to us as well. So we are going to get into some slide sharing and then we'll come back out and have a little party later. I'm going to go ahead and turn my video off and get into the slides. Again, don't be shy. Head over into the chat. We have an incredible community from all over the world who chooses to be here and of course, using our platform. And today, we're going to talk about how you can get more customers from anywhere in the world using your Get Oil system and working smarter. So today again, part two of this series, the consultative shift, when and how to offer to share Young Living. So today, we will do a quick recap of this workshop series, what we covered last week and what you can expect this week. And in the other two weeks to follow, we will talk about the resources that we shared last week that you have access to this week as well. It is just one resource for the entire four-part series. We will then get into part two of your pipeline, the consultative shift. And then we will, as always, get into Q and A and live help. So if you came here today with questions, if you need help, ask. We are here on this call literally for this purpose. So get into the Q and A, let us know what your questions are, even if they have nothing to do with today's topic of discussion. And if you are watching this as a replay, we invite you to come and join us on one of these live calls, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. It's where you're going to want to go to sign yourself up to be on this list, to tune into these weekly calls. It is 100% free. You do not have to be a Get Oil customer to take advantage of these. And quite often, you're going to learn so much regardless of whether you use us or not. But I think you'll ultimately decide to take the plunge and get started with us. And boy, do people share some incredible gratitude when they do. We love hearing from you guys and seeing how you're using our tools to improve not just your business, but how your business enriches your life because you get your time back, right? You get your sanity back. Now, if you'd like to work together on a call like this one, we do dedicate the second half of these calls to working with you. So you can go to get oiling.com/web site review to let us know what you'd like help with. And in the second half of one of these Thursday calls, we will pull you out to speak live and we will look at your work together or discuss your strategy together, whatever that looks like for you. Now, if you'd like to just simply hand off your ideas for someone to execute them for you, we've got you covered there too. Go to get oiling.com/conceivers to learn more, meet our team and get a quote for your project. All right. So let's get into this. A brand partner pipeline is the focus of this four-part series. We are now in week two. Last week, we covered relationship building. That's the first phase or stage of your pipeline. The second stage is the consultative shift. And then from there, we get into the sharing to sign up stage and then ultimately getting our new customers started with our checklist and then showing up with them for their first 90 days. So the pipeline in action, if you were to map it out, it looks a little bit like this. So we've got relationship building. That's where everything starts and sometimes where things return to. If the conversation isn't shifting in the direction of a yes to share Young Living, right? So the point of disclosure is that point at which someone has shared a pain point, a goal, a struggle, something with you that you recognize as being a thing that you can help them fix, solve or achieve with Young Living products. And the consultative shift is what happens in the conversation as a response to that point of disclosure. They've shared something or disclosed something with you that you see as an opportunity to serve. And so you're shifting the tone there and your actions in the conversation to offer to help. From there, if they say yes, you share. If they don't say yes, we go back to relationship building and we repeat the cycle that you see over here on the left-hand side of the diagram. Of course, they say yes to sharing. You go through the sharing stage and then you go on to close and get your new customer. Now, in Get Oil, we are going to be managing this process with a thing called follow-up plans. Follow-up plans are a feature in Get Oil that allow you to systematize your to-dos. So if you've got things that you need to do, so in each of these stages, you have specific to-dos, right? But how do we always remember exactly what steps to follow with each person that could be, you know, we could have 27 people in four different stages at any point in time of this pipeline. How do we know that we're doing all of the right steps? We do that with these follow-up plans because we'll have the same to-dos for every person for every stage. Now, we manage these follow-up plans with a feature in Get Oil called automations. Now, automations basically just keep your to-do list clean. They will remove the old to-dos because you are now in a new stage and replace them with new ones, right? Now, what you have as your resource, which we've shared with you in the email that went out prior to this call, we also shared this on last week's call. And I think team, if we could pop that into the chat, just in case anybody missed it, and this will be in the description below the recording when we put this on YouTube. Your resources here are automations and these automations will apply and/or remove follow-up plans as well as tags where appropriate throughout this process. All right. So our pipeline stages, like we just mentioned, are relationship building. That's your conversation with someone up to that point of disclosure. Then there's the consultative shift. That is the phase in which you are inviting them to look at Young Living as a solution to a problem they've shared with you. Then we've got our sharing to sign up stage. So what are we doing when it's time to share? And how are we moving that into getting them started? What are we doing when we're getting them started? And then once they are signed up, what do we do next, right? So this is going to be the steps that we follow up to the point that they have their product in hand. And then we've got our first 90 days, which is now that they have products, we're going to be showing up consistently for them and helping them to make sure that they have found at least one hero product that they can't live without. That's going into that monthly order every single month. Now, this is what this looks like if we were to draw this out visually. Our pipeline stages, as we've just described them, are up on the top here in blue, right? So you can see that those move in this straight line. Sometimes we will kind of circle back from the consultative shift or sharing to sign up back to relationship building if we don't proceed. And then you've got the triggers. So these are the things that happen that cause us to move someone down the pipeline. So if a conversation begins and you feel like you've got good rapport and you think this is someone you might want to eventually share Young Living with, we're going to put them into the relationship building automation. So they're in that part of your pipeline. When you reach the point of disclosure, they've shared that they trust you enough to share with you something that they are maybe struggling with, that you could maybe help them with. That's your point of disclosure. We move them into the consultative shift. And then after they've accepted the invitation to check out Young Living, we're moving into sharing to sign up and then on and on. Now, we'll be going through these in detail, of course, as we continue moving forward. Today, we're focusing on this consultative shift stage. Now, just to recap, we talked about this last week. Our goals in this entire process, we have to understand as brand partners, we want to share, but we have to be specific about what our goals are for sharing, right? If your goal is just to make a lot of money, you certainly could. But if your heart is not in this, you're not going to go very far, right? So we want to make sure that we've got our head and our heart in the right place. So the first place we want to set our expectations and goals for is that we want to have mutually fulfilling conversations, lots of them, with lots and lots of interesting, amazing people that we enjoy having conversations with. We also need to have a dedicated goal. And this might be something that you consider putting, you know, maybe some kind of visual reminder for near where you do your work to listen more than you speak. You have two ears and one mouth for a reason. We want to be able to learn how to correctly discern what the opportunity to serve looks like, right? So when you hear somebody share something with you, you want to be able to feel confident that that is the opportunity to show up and say, I would really love to help you with that. Would you be interested in learning more, right? To be able to know what that opportunity looks like. And then when you are able to share, when they say yes to sharing, you're able to do so in such a way that the other person is not just buying in to get product, but buying in to make lifestyle changes, right? And then ultimately, ultimately, what we want is for every person that we share with to absolutely fall in love with product that they can't live without. So that these are folks who are on loyalty rewards every single month, don't need to be reminded about anything because they love the products that they have so much that they know there's got to be more. This company has, it's going to work for them. Okay? Now, let's talk about putting this to work. Now, just to recap from last week, we talked about relationship building. So we begin the conversation. We get into this relationship building pipeline stage. You apply that relationship building automation to your customer and you've got a series of to-dos. And essentially, what those look like are you showing up on a weekly basis and engaging with them and adding notes to your system, right? And then at the point, they share something with you that appears to be that opportunity to share. That is that point of disclosure where we move into the stage that we're speaking about today, which is the consultative shift, right? So what we did in relationship building is showing up, connecting, adding value to the people that we know. We are rapport building or forwarding family occupation, recreation dreams and goals. These are just things that you can discuss in conversation that allow you to get closer to the person that you are connecting with, having a more fulfilling conversation on both sides. And then of course, that in that environment, you have the best opportunity to build a kind of trust that will have someone wanting to maybe share issues with you that you might be able to help with. So here again, what we're doing is when we are having a conversation with someone that we may want to eventually share with, we're going to add that relationship building automation to the contacts. So we get those weekly reminders to connect. We're going to follow the to-dos and add notes as that automation is going to prompt us. And then we are in those conversations, listening for that point of disclosure. Okay. Now, the point of disclosure is what helps to move us from relationship building into the next stage, the consultative shift. The point of disclosure is going to happen at some point in your conversation. And it might be soon and it might be way later. You never know. But at some point, your friend is going to share some kind of a goal or a pain point or a problem with you that you know that you can help them solve. You know of someone's story, you know of your own story. You know of a product that works well with that thing that they are struggling with. You're going to hear something from them that's going to make you go, oh, oh, I think I could help with that, right? When you hear this, please do not pounce. Do not pounce. We are not opportunists. We are here to serve. And if we are serving properly, we are rewarded abundantly, right? So don't pounce with, I got an oil for that. Hey, hey, if that's bothering you. Hey, I got a thing. I got a thing. Please don't ever do that. So don't pounce with that when they share. Show up, be present, empathize, encourage, whatever's appropriate for you to show up and be a good friend in that moment where sometimes someone's actually sharing something pretty, you know, pretty personal, right? Sometimes painful. Please do not seize that as an opportunity. See that as an opportunity to show up as a supportive friend. Now, one thing that you should absolutely be doing in this moment is asking more questions. Learn more about the thing that they said. If it's a goal they shared, learn why they have that goal, right? If they're complaining about having extra weight on their body, ask them why is it important for them to lose that weight? What's happening in their life that's making them want that change? Ask questions to become better oriented with the why behind what they're sharing with you. So that again, you can be more supportive period emotionally as a friend. But also it'll give you a better idea as to whether or not you can approach them with an opportunity to serve them well, right? And at this point, we are going to apply the consultative shift automation to that contact, right? That's what we're doing. We are adding that at that point of disclosure, adding that consultative shift automation where we now have a new set of to-dos. Now, let's talk about this. The consultative shift, what happens here is after your friend has, we've reached that point of disclosure, they've shared their problem, their goal, their pain with you. The first thing you do is stop, pause, listen, 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 ask questions so that you can listen and learn more. And then you're going to go consult your resources. Any resources you have, there's no wrong answer here, so long as it is something that, you know, is a Young Living related resource, okay? Then you can come back 24 to 48 hours to offer help. We're going to pause, remember, pause. We are not going to go leap at an opportunity for you to sell something, okay? We are going to come back after 24 to 48 hours to help them and we are going to ask if they would like our help. So this is what happens in this shift. We say, I've been thinking about what you told me. Or I've been thinking about what you said, or I've been thinking about what we talked about yesterday or a couple of days ago. And then you can say, I have something or I know something that can help. Or you can say, make this a question. If I could show you a way to fix that, would you be open to checking it out? I've been thinking about what we were talking about and I have a friend who actually experienced that same thing and she has, you know, she's, she's fully recovered or, you know, she's lost 30 pounds. Or I have experienced that as well and I struggled with it for a long time. But you know, in the last six months, I've been getting the best sleep of my life. Do you want to see what's working for me? Ask this question. You got to figure out the way that you want to ask this question. And the bonus here is, is that you don't have to respond on the fly. The whole point of the consultative shift is to pause and then go figure out what you're going to do next, right? We're not blindly jumping at opportunity because it smells like one. We are saying, you know what, this might be something, I'm going to show up and be present because I'm a good friend. And I'm going to pause. I'm going to go see what I can bring back to help my friend, right? So the to-dos for this stage are to, of course, first add notes to your good oiling system. From that point of disclosure, what is that pain point, the goal, the issue that they shared with you that they are struggling with? And then I want you to go research at least 250 PV worth of products to recommend. Maybe have a targeted product based on what they are talking about. And then always have some kind of powerful everyday use supplemental product such as a kit. A lot of the kits are going to be fantastic for this. Ningxia Red is a given here. I think for 99.99% of anyone is that you include Ningxia as a recommendation. Then I want you to go research testimonials and stories related to what they told you and related to who they are, where they are in life, something that they could relate to. And then figure out what tool you're going to use to share Young Living with this friend. And then after at least 24 hours, I wouldn't go much more than 48 hours. I want you to reach out to offer, to share information with them. Now, why this period of time? Number one, if we go under 24 hours, we look like and maybe even are, because we're jumping the gun like that, a little bit of an opportunist and that's just not very friendly. 48 and beyond, like so if we go beyond 48, the person who shared that with you, especially if they were coming to you from a vulnerable place, they may not be in that same energy or at least an energy close to it when you return to the conversation, right? So there's a window there where someone has opened up and shared something with you where, and this has nothing to do with you. It has everything to do with whether or not they are in a place where they're willing to contend with whatever that issue is and to take real steps to fix it. You're going to have the best opportunity to see them be open to taking action and doing the work. Because whatever it is that their goal is, it's not just product that's going to solve it. It's them making changes to how they live their life, right? So their openness to making lifestyle changes is going to shrink the farther away you get from them opening up and telling you something that is bothering them, right? They're going to be distracted with the next thing and they're not going to be in that mindset anymore. So 24 hours and in the neighborhood of 24 and definitely before 48 is the best window for that reason. So if you ask that question that I went through in the previous slide and they say yes, we're going to move them into our next phase, which is using that sharing to sign up automation, which has its own to-do list. And if they say no, or if they don't seem very open, totally fine, reapply that relationship building automation and it'll take you back to the reminders that you had previously just to stay engaged with this person. And you can continue applying that relationship building automation. Or you can choose, you know, perhaps in some cases to say, you know what? Maybe this isn't someone who is looking for help or to make change at this point. And that's totally fine. And we can just be a good friend and let it go, right? Now, let's break down a little bit of more about what we're doing in the stage in the consultative shift. What am I inviting to? Because what we are ultimately doing in this shift is again, we're pausing, we're consulting our resources, and then we are ultimately inviting them to look at those resources. So what is that? What are we sending them to? What are we sharing with them? What am I inviting them to see? So first things first, if you aren't already doing this, please start doing this today. You need to always have an event on your calendar that you can be inviting people to. This can be yours. It can be someone else's. It does not have to be someone in your team. It can be online. It can be offline. Obviously, if they're in your area, you're going to be better off meeting with them in person if you can and having them experience product or even sampling product. But that doesn't mean that you can't do this fabulously from far away. So always have an event on the calendar that you can invite to. The reason why this is the first thing that I recommend here is, is because third-party validation does more selling than any telling you can do is able to close, right? So having people in the room and the energy of the people in the room who are validating what the information is saying is going to do more than you alone can do in any circumstance, all right? So have an event, always know something that you can be saying, hey, I've got this thing on Thursday. There is this incredible speaker on Thursday who's actually been through this thing that you were just talking about. Would you want to maybe come and check that out, right? So always have that as an option. And then always be aware of what your availability looks like, right? If you have a calendar booking link or something like that, that's a great thing to have handy. I would not, in this circumstance, because we've been having a conversation with a friend, I wouldn't drop a link to a, you know, a calendar booking software here. I would pull it up yourself and then talk with them just to keep it very conversational and friendly and informal, getting them onto some kind of a, an appointment with you, right? Suggest a time and always, 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 always period, always make it an appointment, okay? When you are shifting, the reason why we call this a consultative shift is because you've been showing up like a friend and you are now putting on your consultant hat. Okay, you are putting on a wellness consultant hat. You've been there for your friend and now we're stepping into your realm of expertise. And you are inviting your friend to come with you and have their handhold held by an expert to see what their options are, okay? Make this an appointment because that's what professionals do. And at this point, you've put that hat on in your consultative capacity, you are a professional. Make it an appointment, okay? And this can be in person, it could be phone, it could be Zoom. Never ever, 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 ever drop a link, right? If they say, oh yeah, I would be interested in checking out XYZ. If you just send them a bunch of information, you are playing roulette with your business, right? So if you have, and I'll talk about that here in just a bit, but make sure it's an appointment. And if you have tools ready, so if you already know what you're going to share when you're inviting, you're confident with getting on a call with them today. And they say, I've got 30 minutes today at X time, do it, right? I'm not saying this has to be an appointment sometime in the future, okay? It just needs to be something that is set. We're going to meet now for 30 minutes or, you know, give me five minutes to grab my stuff. I'll meet you in five minutes on Zoom. It'll take us about 45 minutes, whatever that looks like. Behave like a professional here and not just like a friend who's being casual because that is going to set the stage for how this person interacts with you and with Young Living for the long run. Trust me on this, all right? So you can meet soon. Otherwise, make an appointment, prefer to connect with, basically to connect them with more than just you. Prefer to connect them with, you know, maybe one other person on the call who is leading the call, like a three-way call. Or of course, some kind of an event where you've got other people edifying the person who's speaking and the information being shared. All right. Now, let's talk about the invite. Let's break this down a little bit because this might not seem natural to you, but we need to find ways to make it so. So here are some examples. Hey, I've been thinking about that thing you shared with me. This is actually something I've dealt with personally and I'd be thrilled to share what's worked for me if you're interested. And if they say yes, you say, I'm actually going to be giving a class on this next Thursday at eight, if you want to come. We could also meet one-on-one. It would just take about 45 minutes either way, which works for you. Always close with a question that there's no more than two answers for. You can ask open-ended questions during the exploratory parts of your conversation. But in this phase, again, you are the professional and you're wearing your consultation hat and you are asking them questions that they need to provide answers to. So hey, I've been thinking about that thing you shared with me. This is actually something that I've dealt with and I would be thrilled to share what's been working for me, giving a class next week, if you'd like to come. If you prefer to meet one-on-one, I could do that too. Be 45 minutes either way, what works best for you. And let them tell you, don't say, well, could you maybe? No. Ask them this and have them answer one of the options that you provided. Here's another example. Hey, I've been thinking about that thing you shared with me. A friend of mine has dealt with the same thing and I'd be happy to share what's worked for her and maybe even introduce you to her if you want to learn more about it from her. And then give a little bit more of a story here because it's someone else. You could say, you know, hey, my friend, you know, was obviously be mindful of your, your hot words, but I'm going to speak out of turn here a little bit. So I have a friend who was diagnosed with XYZ thing, maybe it's the same thing they were. And, you know, she struggled with finding relief for one thing or the other. And, and she's actually found some things that are working really well for her and she gives classes on this. So this might be you inviting to someone else's class, right? Or hey, I would love to connect you with my friend who has been through this as well. Who's, you know, here's what she has now. So be thinking about her outcomes, your friend. So maybe this is an upline, maybe this is a cross-team member who is willing to hop on calls to kind of give third-party validation. You guys do that for each other, please. It's, it's so effective to build community and to really show people that with Young Living, the value that you're getting is obviously in the products. But the, but the legacy of how you use the products is the community and what the community shares among one another. Isn't that right? All right. Anyway, off of that brief soapbox. So if they say yes, and you, and basically what you want to do here, if somebody is, you know, can you send me information? You say, it's a little bit too complicated to explain over text. We could easily talk through it in about 30 minutes though. I've got some time later today or maybe this Wednesday afternoon, which works for you. Right? So we're visiting a couple of different options here. You want to maybe present that this is someone else or you want to present that it's yourself for the, you know, I've been through that or my friend's been through that. And then of course, you could introduce them to your friend. It could be your friend giving the class and friend literally could be, I mean, you know, name, you know, name a big name in Young Living that offers regular classes. You could say my friend and, and that works all the same, right? All right. And again, I've got some time later today or this Wednesday afternoon, we're giving option A or option B. Which one of these works for you? And then if they, they want to, they want to produce an option C, then of course, you can do that. If somebody comes back from a question like this with an iffy answer, like they don't want to speak to you, then you know you need to go back to relationship building. You did not build the kind of rapport and trust that would be needed in order for them to comfortably move forward. So move them back to that relationship building automation and continue just showing up and being a friend because clearly they are either not resonating with your invitation or this is something that they're actually maybe not that ready to move on, right? Okay. So no matter what you do, please don't ever, ever pounce on the point of disclosure. Honor the trust that's been shared with you when someone tells you that they're struggling, right? Don't use that as an opportunity to just dive right into a pitch. Don't use that as an opportunity to just dive right into a pitch. Then, once you have. Gotten a yes. That they would be interested to learn more about whatever it is that you plan to share with them. Confirm that they are going to come to a class in person or online, a two on one meeting or a one on one meeting. And then remember, please, always dropping links and copy paste information. Infographics, whatever is like playing slots. If they don't get it, reading and perusing that information by themselves. The chance of you swooping in and helping them get it. It falls off a cliff, you guys. You need to be the one that's sitting there with them, providing context as to how this will solve the problem. They told you they had. The first time they see the information. Can you send supporting information after you've done that? Absolutely, yes. But you need to be the person who is validating that information and helping to guide them toward it in the first place. Never rely on a link. Now, if you are using maybe a video, uh, to, to help, uh, get the, the process going. You absolutely can say, all right, we're gonna hop on a call and I'm gonna go ahead and mute myself and you can hit play. And then once the video is done playing, we can talk through it. Even if you're using a video link or a website. You should be on a call with them, sitting next to them, on zoom with them, on the phone with them, whatever that looks like. Because you need to be able to catch in the moment, the questions that they have, the doubts that they have. And if you are just shooting information over the web. It is no different than putting a coin into a slot machine. You might get a customer out of it. But you probably won't get a customer for life out of it. And if you put all of that work into developing connection and trust. To be able to place Young Living in front of someone, would you rather just roll the dice on whether or not they stick with Young Living products? Would you be just as okay with somebody who buys a kit and never comes back? Or would you prefer that somebody understands how to integrate these products into their life so that they can be a customer for life? Don't rely on links, okay? End that rant. So that consultative approach, this phase is so important because this is where we're shifting our approach. And this is what gets us long term customers. You will have the stickiest team if you follow these steps. Throughout this four, uh, four part process, and this is such an important piece of it. All right, so what do we do if they say no? What if they are just a little squirrely, they don't want to say yes, or they ghost or whatever, right? So if they aren't a yes, just go back and apply that relationship building automation. Make sure that you're adding notes for yourself. To that contact and then just keep listening and engaging to find a point of disclosure that they're interested in acting on. And understand as well, sometimes people just aren't ready to do something for themselves. And if that's the case, that's fine. You can choose to connect with them at another point down the road. You don't have to necessarily put that relationship building automation back on them. You can use, uh, the, there's actually a, a lead rating system. Uh, that you can use and get oiling that'll remind you to maybe check in on that person in six months. And at that point, maybe you consider adding that relationship building automation to them again. And pursuing that conversation when they might be in a slightly different place, maybe more. Uh, interested in taking productive action towards solving the problems that they have. All right, so if they say yes to seeing information, what we're doing here, and that's when they have said, yes, I would love to check that out. I will see you at two o'clock tomorrow or I will be at that event at seven o'clock on Thursday. Or I'll see you in thirty minutes. I, I gotta, you know. Get my kids situated. When they say yes and they commit to the appointment for sharing. Then you are going to apply that next stage, that sharing to signup stage in our process. And we will be going into that next week. Uh, if they say no to seeing information, you're going to apply the relationship building automation. And that's going to remove all of the to dos from the consultative shift, from sharing to sign up, et cetera. Um, you know, no matter where you are in the process here, uh, it is going to remove those to do's. So that you're only focusing on relationship building. So we're going to talk about what happens during that sharing to signup phase next week in part three. Uh, and that is again, where they have accepted that invite. And now we are following the steps to make sure that we are sharing the right way and getting them signed up in such a way that they keep coming back. And stay customers forever, all right? So let's get into our live help and Q and A. Excited to see if you guys have any questions here today. Uh, this is also an open invitation for anyone that's here, if you want to talk through. Uh, anything that you are working on, whether that is related to this pipeline that we're discussing here. Or if it's something that's maybe more technical or design related, uh, if you want to look at, um, you know. Elements of your system together, we could certainly do that as well. Um, Allison says, are these invitation samples available to copy and paste into a saved reply or AI? Um, or just on a graphic? So, um, those are just things that I came up with Allison and you're free to use them. That the idea here is that they're a template for you to work from. The template is essentially, I've been thinking about what we were talking about, so I'm, I'm returning to a conversation. Or I'm returning to a point in a conversation that we had a day or two days ago. And so I've been thinking about this. I have something that could help you, right? My story, my friend's story, whatever, would you be interested in seeing how this might help you as well? That's it. It's a four part formula. You're gonna need to fill in the blanks based on whatever that conversation is showing for you. Right? So if they say. Uh, gosh, I don't know, like ever since I had this baby, I've been struggling with sleep and I feel so stressed out. And you know, you get all of the, the other things. Well, oh my gosh, that's, that's so horrible for you. I'm so sorry to hear that. Um, you know, how else is that impacting you? You know, have you, you know, have you tried melatonin or have you done this or that? And you let them continue talking and you, and you develop that and then a day later, wait, wait a day or more. And you come back and you say, hey, you know, I've been thinking about, you know, the other day you were telling me about your struggles with sleep and. You know, I, I, it's been a long time since I went through that, but I've actually got a friend. Uh, who has, uh, you know, who had a kid, uh, within the last year. Uh, she was struggling with a lot of that as well, was dealing with, you know, again, her circumstances were similar. And you know, and, and she actually has this protocol, uh, that she shared with me. Uh, you know, just a couple of things that she took in a couple of changes that she made to her daily life. Is that something you'd be interested in checking out? I'd be happy to share that with you. And if she says yes, you say, okay, cool. So it's kind of visual and it would just take us about thirty minutes. Would you, uh, like, you know, does Wednesday work for you or I've got some time later today? Right? So again, this isn't a script. So this isn't something that you copy. This is a framework that I want you to internalize. I've been thinking about what you said. I have a thing. Validated in some way. It was my own experience or it was a friend of mine and. Would you be open to checking that out? If I could show you how to fix that problem? If I, cause like if you, if you know how to fix it, because you've been through it, you say, if I could show you what worked for me. Uh, you know, would you be interested in checking it out? You know, or, you know, I've got my friend's protocol on how to solve that. She's helped a bunch of people. Would you be interested in checking that out? And if the answer is no, I'm good, go back to relationship building. If the answer is yes, then you nail down that time that you're going to be sharing with them. Okay, uh, let me see. And then when you're sharing, like, once you're sharing, like, they've said yes and you are sharing with them. Be on the call with them, maybe incorporate. Um, you know, if you have some graphics that you want to show, incorporate that, that into what your screen sharing. Um, maybe incorporate the, you know, if you've got some studies that talk about lavender oil and, and its effects in particular circumstances. Use those by all means. Um, but you use those once they've said yes and you are on the call with them. Okay, let me see. Allison says, I have some of these and might get oiling. Was wondering where to start with a new signup last night, the checklist or the first ninety days. Uh, yeah, so that would be the checklist. So, um, if we go back and look at this real quick, and this is jumping ahead, by the way, but Allison, since you are. Uh, since you are in that, um, that stage, let me show you. Um, so if they've, they've signed up last night, you need to apply the first customer check, uh, the, the new customer checklist automation. And then once they have their product and there are steps here. Uh, that it will have you follow. Once they have their product in hand, it's been delivered, then you're going to apply that first ninety day automation. Also, congrats on your new customer. All right, um, let me see. If you have four to five good oiling tabs open on your computer. All right, Paula says, I have a boatload of contacts that are just phone number and city. I don't know where they came from, not sure what to do with them. Uh, so what I would do is, um, I would not send a mass text to them. Um, I would maybe break them down into, um. You know, maybe the city that they're from or maybe the date that you, um. You got them into your system, maybe see if you can correlate that with where you might have met them. And then, uh, maybe create a saved reply for yourself to make this easy for you. But I would do my best to send individual communications and not bulk ones. Um, you know, so that you're doing, you know, just a couple a day. And if they are very old, that's fine. All you gotta do is say. You know, hey, this is Paula, we met, uh. And then just give your best guess, right? So we, we probably met at a vendor fair within the last few years. Um, you would have indicated interest in blah, blah, blah. Um, okay, yeah, then, then say through my website, you know, so hey, this is Paula. Um, I think you might have found my website and put your information in within the last few years. And it'll actually say, if they're a website lead, you'll see that on their good oiling contact card. So you'll know. Um, and, and then, yeah, just, just reach out to them and honestly, Paula. Um, I'm school, I'm old school about this and I think that a lot of people, uh, are more than they think they are. Uh, because the more tech we get integrated into our lives, uh, the, the farther apart from each other we seem to get. Call them. I, I, I would maybe consider just giving them a call. And if they don't, like, if you leave a message, then shoot them a text and say, hey, this is Paula, uh, I just left you a voicemail. Would love to hear from you. And then do that. Yay, okay, I'm glad that helps. All right, um. How to apply automations to a customer? Yeah, um, Karen, I think we. Oh, thank you, Allison. Um, all right, yeah, let me, let me show you this real quick, actually. Um, this is something that we demonstrated last week briefly, but I'll show you again. Uh, this is our resource bundle. Uh, you're just going to click and claim and that will allow you to have these automations in your system to apply to your contacts. So I'm just gonna go find a contact here. And here we go. Um, here's our contact. And right now, uh, we are in the, um, relationship building stage. So if we reach the point of disclosure, then we're gonna come right up here where it says run an automation on this contact. And then I'm gonna go find that consultative shift. And I'm gonna click run automation. And so now you can see that I have a new list of to dos. So now I need to add notes, I need to research products, testimonials, decide what tool I'm going to use. And then I'm gonna be sending that, I've been thinking about what you shared with me question. And also, if you're using the digital upline coach, this is an invitation. So you're getting credit for this, uh, when you do it in your system. So we're texting or, uh, calling or messaging a lead to invite, uh, to review information. So that's what it looks like. If you want to apply one of these automations to your contact, you just go right up here, run an automation on this contact and then you find it. And then you apply it and it will clean up your list otherwise, uh, from, uh, your previous to dos. Let's see. Uh. I'm glad it's making sense. Uh, so Allison, I feel like I have doubles of those in the bundle. How do I know if any of them are active? I don't think there are, but wondering, so. If you aren't currently actively using them on any customer. Then I would just go in and delete all of those automations, claim a new bundle and be done with it. I do have multiple versions as well. That's because I've demonstrated this on multiple occasions. The reason why you want to get, get this going from a clean start. Uh, is that, um, it's going to be like whichever one you choose actually affects the next one, right? So the first automation is relationship building, it's going to apply a tag. Uh, and it will remove that consultative shift or sharing to signup. If you, uh, had been in that previously, uh, phase with that contact. Uh, so if you need to go back to the beginning, right? Um, and then each one removes the previous ones to do lists. And even like, once we get, uh, when, when we're through with the sharing to signup and, and we have our, our, our new customer checklist. That's even removing the Young Living lead tag and applying Young Living customer first week tag or whichever one that is. Uh, so I would just go through into your, uh, here we go. I'll show you how to do it in your contact settings here. Uh, you go into your automations. And you find the ones that we're referring to here. So just type in the names of the ones that we've referred to. And then you can just go in whichever one it is and you can click delete here. So I would just get rid of those and then, uh, reclaim the bundle so that you've got, you know, just all of it together, fresh and ready to go. I'm glad this is helpful for you, Cindy. Yeah, I think that, um, if, like, what, once you get a, a grasp of this stuff. Like you could even go in and make modifications to what's there. Uh, you may have things that you find works really well for you. Um, and, and those should be a part of your to do list, right? So maybe you send happy mail. That means you need to be reminded to get their mailing address. Maybe you send happy mail to leads. Maybe that's a thing that you like to do. Uh, maybe you're meeting people on Facebook and you want to make sure you get their phone number while they're a lead. And so you get their phone numbers so they can call them next time and so on. Um, should I delete the automations and campaigns or are they the same? No, there are no campaigns involved in any of this. Campaigns are automated communication. That we send from our system out to one or many people at the same time. None of that is happening here. The only thing that we're automating in this process is what's on our to do list. So what, what stays on it, what's removed from it. And in some cases, it would apply the, um, you know, apply or remove the tag. Uh, depending on the designation of that contact. Now, could you incorporate maybe for that new customer checklist? Automation, if you have a campaign that you really like to use. You could do that, you could add that, but I'm not advocating for that here. And we could talk about that a little bit more when we get to that, uh, that part of the, the system. That's right. All you need to do is delete those automations and reclaim the bundle. Um, you could, just to be safe, in case you think that you might modify the follow up plans. I don't know, Greg, could you confirm this? If you claimed an automation, like our, our resource bundle is just automations, right? Um, but those resource bundles apply and remove automation or, or apply and remove follow up plans. Would the deletion of the automation delete that follow up plan that was associated with it? Or would we need to go in and delete those follow up plans?
Yeah, you'd have to delete the follow up plans. Those are separate, yeah.
Got you. Okay, yeah, so, so delete Allison, delete the, uh, the follow up plans. As well as, uh, the animations and then, and then you've got a clean start there. Cause what you may find again is, you know, maybe you decide that you want to incorporate. Uh, a new step in your process. You want to have something else that you're doing. Maybe you learned something from. An upline that you want to incorporate and you wanted to put that into the follow up plan at that stage of your pipeline. Um. If you have four of them, you don't know which one it is. So, uh, so yeah, I would definitely just delete those as well. And then just restart with a brand new claim of that bundle. Awesome, awesome. Do you guys have any other questions or would anybody like to talk through or walk through anything, uh, here on today's call? Cause we definitely have a little bit of time to do that if you want. Or if there's anything that you would like to maybe have recovered here, uh, or if you want to see anything in action, feel free, let me know. Hi, Camelia. Hey, I'm gonna bring you out to chat. How are you doing today?
Hi there, pretty well, looking forward to. To more, um, but I do have a question, maybe you've covered it, but, um. When it comes, I know we have for the new customer. And for those who you've already had contact with, but what about those in the? Like it's been a while, they, they were, let's say they were in a, a, a group that's a leg that's not. Uh. Okay, thank you. And so you, you're shaking, so I don't have to, I'm trying to be very delicate. What type of program, hi Julie, what kind of program then would, uh, not program, I'm sorry. What? I'm gonna call it automation, that's probably not the right word. Sorry, I'm still dealing with the effects concussion here. Which program, what we use to regenerate those folks? So you have the one that the consultive role that where on your pipeline there. Fits in for those that you just wanna, hey, you know, it's been a while. But they're not been, so they don't know you in that way necessarily. But to bring them back in, like, hey, I noticed you, I'm in your and I care. But I've got to get to the point even before saying, hey, I was just thinking about you. But I'm thinking about you, not because they had a contact, but because they deserve to come in.
Right, so what's gonna Right. So what's going to happen there is, because we know they have product in hand. We know that they, you know, have access, maybe, maybe, okay.
They may have dropped off, you know, I say some have dropped off because it's been. Going back and just go back and recover. It's kind of more of a recovery pipe.
Got you. Yeah, yeah. So then what you might do here is, um, first, you're, you're going to want to be relationship building with that person. Right? You're, you're honestly, you're going to be following something very similar to this. If you're trying to reactivate folks who, uh, were in your business previously, or maybe are, but maybe aren't being served. Uh, in, in this type of way by whoever. Yeah, so I would still go through these, these stages. And just what you may find is, I mean, obviously, we want to be able to have a connection with this person. We want to understand why they, uh, use product, right? So we're still going to be, you know, figuring out what got them started. So the way that you have this conversation, you're still going to be. Showing up and just kind of touching on them with, you know, your social media or a phone call or whatever, the same way that you would if this was a lead. But the questions are going to be slightly different, right? So this is going to be, you know, may, maybe what, what made you decide to get started with, with Young Living? Do you have a favorite product? You know, what are your goals with the products that you're using, et cetera? So that's, you know, at that point, they're sharing with you. Um, and then from that point forward, instead of this part, because they actually have an account, what you're doing is saying. You know, I want to make sure that you're able to reach the goal that you've shared with me. Would you be open to entering into, you know, sort of an accountability? Agreement, I'll, I'll coach you, I'll be here for you. You know, we could meet once a week or once a month, it's up to you. Uh, and I can help you with resources to achieve your goals. And, and basically you're just going to be jumping ahead, right? Because you don't need to reshare with them. You might go through, um. The new customer checklist, just kind of treating them like someone new. Obviously, don't worry about checking off things that don't apply to them. Um, and then I would still go through the first 90 days because the first 90 days. I'll actually show you what that looks like. And again, we'll get into this in, in two weeks, um, from this week. But what we're doing here is we are, you know, kind of doing a walkthrough based on their goals. We've maybe put together some kind of a routine. You know, to, to kind of help them understand how to use the products that they have in their order. And so that's sort of like a kickoff call. And then you're basically just, you know, you've got, you've got a check in call, book a meeting from a meeting and you, you set up that cadence. One of my favorite things I've ever heard. Anyone say in the world of sales and follow up is what does follow up look like for you? That's a big credit to Jackie McLaughlin. She, um. She uses that with the folks that she connects with, whether leads or team. And it's a great way to show that you are allied with the person without them feeling pressured. And it really kind of puts the power in their hands. It makes people feel good. That they're kind of calling those shots. So you say, what does follow up look like for you? And then you help to keep them accountable. And that's ultimately what you're doing. With that first 90 day sequence. And the goal of the 90 day sequence, which again, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here. The, the goal of that first 90 days, uh, is to really be showing up, uh, present for them throughout a, you know, what, what is ultimately a problem solving journey that they have. They're, they're trying to fix something. Uh, they're trying to get a result. And, uh, and you are someone who holds the keys, especially, I, I, I know you do, uh, Camelia, because you have been. A part of this community for a long time. You have tons and tons of resources. And so you are, you know, their guide essentially at that point. So you're in the relationship building phase and looking for, um. Why their why, right? Cause they said, yes, you're living at some point. So what is their why and what are their goals? And then instead of, let me show you Young Living, you're saying. Let me be your guide. And we're going to help you get that problem solved that you shared with me.
So, so like the, in this. And it's beyond this. But as the caring consultant, so to speak, for people that have never, no, or it could have been two years, it could have been. Three, really those people who have dropped and also trying. We'll get to the ones that are new within the community, but I feel like this. Well, you know me, that obligation to those, it's been that burden to those who have been. There, but who didn't know me. So Karen consulting, so it sounds like the pre-launch to that. Would be to make a, because I don't even, may not even, I'm going to go back in the VO to see if I, how far to let me go back to get people who have dropped off.
There are ways to do that. My recommendation would always be to start with the, the newest, start with the hottest, the warmest. Because that's going, that's going to get you more wins, that's going to see more results. If you start with people who are from ages ago, or, or on the opposite end of the spectrum, like absolutely cold leads. You're not going to feel very energized because you're going to feel like you're just, you're just working uphill in a mudslide. So start with what's closest. So the people who maybe have an account. But are maybe in that leg that you know isn't being served. So they, maybe they placed an order last month and you're, you're going, that's going to be your easiest win there is, hey. I'm putting together and you could even, you can make a community out of this if you really wanted to. You could say, you know, I'm, I'm getting a group of people together or. And this is the easiest thing to do. You could be inviting these people into the 14 day reset. Cause that's a community that's already built, full of people, super helpful people as young living folks are. And, uh, and just boatloads of resources that you don't have to create yourself. So you can say, I'm actually, I'm going to be. Doing this thing and I'd love for you to do this with me. We can be accountability partners. Right? And then you just do that with everybody and, and start with the people who have accounts that you know aren't being served and then work out from there, right? Don't worry too much about the. Yes, newest first, yeah.
Okay, those who may have just dropped off or those who dropped off in the last, who still would. Potentially have product, have some awareness and this particular group should somewhere know about me. If they don't. It's still close enough that they still know the person who was. With them. Okay, that makes sense. And then it's just, hey, you know what? I'm making sure because I care, because I do. That you know about these things and I see that you've, you may have missed some of these valuable things. And I'm stepping in and I'm willing to be, okay, and then pick up where you, where you just dropped. Okay. And I'm going to be working with, you know, somebody there's very soon. And perhaps that can be a part of, but that's, that's really good. Thank you so much, beautiful people. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We appreciate you. All right, Flo, you've got your hand up. Let me bring you out. Hi, how can we help?
Oh, I was just. Wanting to ask some very simple things, not quite as advanced as this and just stuff on my own page. I want to be able to put a link on my blog that. Takes them back from the blog to, um, my menu and stuff like that, stuck to the homepage.
Okay.
Is there a way to do that?
So you would like to be able to have people on your blog, make it back to your homepage?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's actually something that, um. That your menu should be doing for you, but if you wanted to link back to your homepage. Uh, here, let me. Let me just pop over here and we can take a look. So this is your. Looks like you have a, a landing page set up, uh, to gate your homepage, but let's just go straight over to your blog.
It's under resources at the bottom. Okay, you got it.
Yeah. So, um, so actually there, there is, there's a totally like. Basic thing that most websites do. I don't think I've ever seen a website that doesn't do this. Whatever the logo is or the, the lettering, whatever it is in the top left hand corner of a website. If you click it. It takes you to the homepage.
Oh, okay. So maybe my, mine says brand partner, maybe I should say. Homepage or something.
Well, so here, um. Let me see. So what you have, you have a setting in your account and I'll show you what this looks like. This is under customize my site. You have chosen to have a landing page, uh, show up. To require, uh, someone to see that landing page before they can see your homepage. Right? So you can choose to have nothing there and it goes straight to your homepage or you could keep this. And you are allowing someone to bypass it. And once they do, they're not going to see this again, uh, which again, is totally fine. Here we go. So we've got your, um, your built in theme here, which is great. But yeah, you're, so you, you want people to be able to come back here from the blog, right?
Right.
Yeah. So they're just going to be able to go there from the menu. So they're just going to click, uh, this over here in the left hand corner. And that takes them back to home. And it says brand partner here because this is a built in theme.
Uh huh.
Right? So a custom homepage isn't going to show that. So if you had, because I see you have a lot of pages. On your site, if you had a custom homepage, then brand partner wouldn't show up there automatically, but because this is a part of the replicated. Set of pages that you have as a brand partner and this is linking off to Young Living, et cetera. That is, uh, why brand partner shows up there because you know, there are a lot of folks who have a page very similar to this one, uh, and they are brand partners as well.
So, well, how could I put something up there that tells them to go back that they don't know to click on the picture?
So if you really wanted to, you could certainly create another menu item that says home. That could just take them back to your homepage. If, if you really prefer that, you could do that.
So just go to menu and put a link to the home.
That's right. So you could add that as a, as a menu item.
Go to website and blog and then menu, right?
So here we would just be, we would be adding a new menu. Uh, and this is going to be home. Uh, and this is going to be, uh, a URL.
I gotta go slow. You press add, add and add a menu or add an item to a menu.
So what I'm doing, because I want this to be like up top here, because you want them to be able to see it, I assume. Yeah. Um, yeah. So we're just going to make that your homepage. Uh, and we'll make it a button. You can obviously change the color of this if you want.
I'm, I'm back on step one. A website menu is the page, right, that I'm on and I do add, correct? And then add menu or add an item to a menu?
Add menu. And you go, you go to add menu. And then you create the new, I, you, you create the new menu. And the way I set this up is, uh, the header text is home.
And I'm doing, I'm doing it now as we speak.
Got you. Well, I've, I've, I've got it right here. If you want to look at the screen, this is how I've set it up.
Yeah, but I'm doing it on my computer and looking on my phone, so I can hardly see it.
Got you. So. Under header text, I've put home. Under header links to, I have put your website.
So. Uh, URL?
Yes, the URL, uh huh. And I've typed in the link to your website. And then, um, I've chosen a button for the header style. And then dragging the home up to the very top of the list and. Saving.
Okay, I'm going to have to go back, back and do it. Did you already do it? Or you did it for me?
I did.
Oh, good. Love it.
Yep. And so when they click that, so let's just, if we're on your blog, um, and we want them to. Go to home, we can just click home and it'll take them home.
My people are simple, just like me. That's perfect.
Awesome. I'm glad that was helpful.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure thing. All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, let me see, Allison, you had one more follow up question. Delete the pipeline bundle automations and all follow up plans? Yes. Yeah, yeah, just delete all of them. Uh, and that way you're starting 100% from a clean slate. All of the follow up plans, which should be five. And all of the automations, which should be five. And that should take care of it for you. Once you've done that, just reclaim the bundle, don't do it again. And, uh, and use that one moving forward. And I love bam fam is a saying too. Book a meeting from a meeting. You always want to keep that cadence going. Remember, you are the one in the consultant hat. You are the one with the expertise. This is the opportunity for you to stand in your power and for you to recognize that because you made the choice. To live the life that you're living now, you have the ability to turn around, hold your hand out and lift people up too. Right? And that's what you're doing. You don't have to have 17 degrees. And, and, and 18 years of experience in Young Living. You don't have to be an herbalist. You don't have to be, you don't have to be anything other than you with a story. And a heart to help others and you can do this. Right? Follow the steps, keep it simple. But remember, when it's time for you to ask for a decision of someone. You aren't doing this as a salesperson. You aren't doing this as a, I need to increase my PV. You're doing this because you see someone. Who, while they're telling you what the problem is that they have. Those are the words that they're saying, but what they're really saying is. I need my life to look different and you made your life look different. You can help them do that too. All right. Remember that when you are asking if someone would like to see something that can work because it worked for you or it worked for your friend. Remember that, that's strength and that's just, that strength is a web of people, millions strong across the world. Who have done the same thing that you have and who are on that same journey and they're all here to support you. All right, including us and we'll be back here to do the same next Thursday.